Yes, Sam, if you'll all join me. Father God, we come to you now and we are just thankful and grateful for this holiday season. And Father, just ultimately for the gift of your son. It was definitely the most precious gift and we are just in awe of that. And Lord, I just pray that you're with each and every person in this room. Lord, that you just come into all of our hearts and just give us your peace and your hope and your joy. It's intended in this, this season as we truly reflect on the importance of it. Father, I just pray that you're with each one of these commissioners, that you guide them and direct them. The decisions that they make today, Lord, and that you're just with all of our county employees and their families. Lord, be with the families that are not able to gather together during this holiday season as well. Father, we love you and we just praise you and we thank you for all that you do in your son's name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one single team and justice for all. With the flag of the state of Mexico. To be assembled in perfect friendship among united cultures.
Is approval of the minutes from December 7th? I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Got a motion in a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Three, approval of accounts payable and payroll.
Make motion, Madam Chair, to approve accounts payable and payroll. I agree.
I'll second. We got a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item four, public requests. This is a time to speak.
The Sheriff's Office Pay Plan has been frozen now for two years, approximately two years. We implemented this plan to stay competitive to surrounding agencies. None of my employees are where they're supposed to be in wages right now. I just, my question is, is the Sheriff's Office Pay Plan a thing of the past? Do we ever plan on re-implementing that pay plan? I lost a certified position approximately seven years ago. Crime is going up, but the positions are not. Are we ever going to replace that position within the Sheriff's Office? We need it. Plus five more, really. And my final question is, why do all employees that have worked through the pandemic not get the incentives? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I've got a few things to say if I can.
Okay.
So I appreciate you folks taking the time to hear us. I'm Chris Brunson. I'm one of the deputies with Roosevelt County Sheriff's Office. And I understand the pay incentives for the detention center. I worked at the detention center as well. I started over there. The incentives could have helped all of our families quite a bit, not just one department. That pretty much would have paid for Christmas for my family. I think a lot more of our deputies would be here right now, too. We just conducted a multi-jurisdictional operation. Pretty much everyone's fatigued from that. But I know a lot of people wanted to be here and I think this is important to all of us. I don't think we're asking for more money necessarily or to be treated better than the other departments, just equal to the other departments within the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Court Morrison, also work at the Sheriff's Office. I agree. The incentive should be throughout the whole office. You know, we go into situations where we don't have luxury of being able to free screen people. You know, we're provided masks and we get to use masks, we have gloves, but there's times that, you know, calls come in, we are in contact with several people. We find out later that maybe they're positive for COVID. And we have to deal with that and bring it home to our family. Again, I just ask you to think about that. Appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Morning, Madam Chair. Morning, Commissioners. Again, just kind of reiterate some of the things that I spoke about last time about the pay plan. We are just asking that we get bumped up. You know, get that pay plan back implemented with the COLAs adjusted to that pay plan. And I do want to thank y'all for entertaining the Resolution 2021-52 for the contributions to PRA. I think that would help out tremendously. The only question I did have on it is that on one of the sections that says it is irrevocable and if when we get to that agenda item, if that could be clarified as to, is that something that the county can't ever come back and say, okay, we're going to pick up a little more of the PRA? And, you know, because at some point, maybe that is something that in lieu of a raise, the PRA could be adjusted as well. So that was just one question that I had on the section where it said it was irrevocable. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, item five, informational items by annual update from Roosevelt County Extension Office. Mr. Kircher.
Visiting with Ms. Hamilton the other day. Give you an update on where things are at. I won't keep you long. I know you're, you're busy. I just wanted to hit a few items. We're doing our best to get back to normal. The university's still doing their dead level best to follow all protocol coming from Santa Fe. And so we in turn then try to do that as well. Just a few highlights I wanted to hit. We were really fortunate this year. Our livestock digit team won the state contest. We were able to work a deal and took those kids to Kansas City this fall and we ended up 10th at the national contest. We were pretty tickled with that. We're back to doing some programming. We had private applicator training last month. Saw Mr. Lee there. And then we also had a, a range weed workshop in November. Like I said, attendance is getting back. Folks are, are happy to be back out and come into meetings. We hosted a kitchen creations classes, which is for diabetic cooking school. This spring, we did that on Zoom. Ms. Reed was actually one of our attendees at that. And just wanted to say our extension clubs are still active and going, even though we don't have a Home Economist and we're doing our best to serve them as, as we can. And we've got 95 members in that right now. And then I just wanted to hit on our ideas for cooking nutrition educator, Carol Calderon. She does an excellent job and is, is now that the schools are opening back up a little bit, she's able to get back in, do some educating. They have worked with 2,400 kids this fall in different programs on teaching better ways to, to eat healthy and utilize nutrition for, for education. So anyway, just wanted to say those are a few of the big things we've done this year. And like I said, we're getting back to doing what we try to do and servicing people. Like I said, the door's always open. We're more than happy to assist however we can. I'd stand for any questions if y'all have any. Yeah, she can sure help them with that. And like she has, she assists with all of those. A lot of those programs are still, the access she had prior COVID is not there yet. They're not, you know, back to doing what they did before, but she helps and assists with everything that, where she can. No, sir, I did not mention. It was Neely Burrow, Kylie Stevenson, my son Cole Kircher, and Tegan Norman were the four kids that, that represented Roosevelt County at that contest. So.
It's tough to make it to that level. Once you get to that level, the top 10 is very commendable.
No, we were, we were really tickled, really tickled.
Good job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Delected official treasures report. Sanchez.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners. What you have before you is your October in, ending balances. And our beginning cash was $2,391,089.79. You had debits of $336,951.26. And you had credits of $418,839.86. Leaving your ending fund, ending general fund cash at $2,309.201.19. I do kind of apologize. There was a delay in getting October to you. Our transition for our software going to live hosting was not as smooth as we would have liked it to be. And we're still tying up some loose ends on that. As far as in my office, we are strong in collecting and January 10 will be the last day to pay your first half property taxes without a penalty. Does anyone have any questions for me? Very good. Thank you. I wish you all, your and your families a Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Healthcare, Mr. Costa. Yes, may we go in? Got a motion in a second?
Yes.
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 Good morning, Commissioners. So for this, this reporting, I've got 15 claims for $18,749.91. Total I recommend for approval, 11 for $16,682.16. Total disapproved, four for $2,067.75. One disapproval is a patient was brought into ER for, from Portales Police Department. And, and then two past timely filing for RGH. One past timely filing for Concord Radiology. Do you have any questions?
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I make a motion to approve the indigent as proposed.
Second that.
Got a motion in a second? How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Not thinking my words. Flood plane, Mr. Montiel.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Quick update on the flood plane. As of today, the 20, the, the 90-day comment period finishes today. And so I did send in my comments that I had as far as the mapping goes for the preliminary mapper revisions. And so they're going to review them. They have 30 days to review and see what kind of issues that we're having. And then we will start the, the six-month review on the, of our ordinances. Okay? So I stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Road.
Ms. Hamilton.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. So quick update on the roads. As y'all are all aware, they have been very actively combating the influx of invasion of the come a week. And so we worked around, Rick had his team prioritize. Obviously, we focused on bus routes and access for residents and everything. We encouraged reports and everything along those lines and on our press release and everything seems to be working well. We are still taking in reports of road issues and they're dealing with those accordingly. And right now, we're working through the holidays. We have authorized overtime in their department. You've seen them out working. I'm sure you've noticed they've been out on Friday and Saturday on occasion as their team is willing and able to work. And so we're just trying to combat those as possible. If you have any other ones that you'd like to add to the list, please let me know and I'll be happy to ensure that they're on there.
Me too. I called you. They were just saying if you had any roads.
Oh, I don't have any, but I would like to make a comment yesterday. About having road workshop. After this meeting, we tried a lot of roads in my district. I was very impressed with the work that's being done and the current status and roads are in, considering all the trouble we had. Our road department, as far as my district concerns, we're committed. I think they just, the work they're doing is phenomenal. I don't think we could ask them to do anything better. They're great.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll share that. Thank you.
I noticed you're not on the agenda. You don't have anything? Okay. Commissioners, anybody got anything? Okay. Number seven, old business, Commissioners' Annual Report of Detention Center Inspection on December 7th.
So, Madam Chair, if I can, this is just where those of you that were able to be present and do the walkthrough, we need to have something articulated and documented in the meeting minutes to reflect your required annual visitation through that facility and the inspection thereof. So anything y'all would like to share and note is appreciated.
Okay.
Well, I have to make some comments. I don't.
Okay.
Let's step in front of you.
Go ahead. Go ahead and make some.
On, you know, that was my first opportunity or to visit that facility. It was a little different than what I had anticipated. First of all, the size of the facility. I didn't realize it was that big. Had that made me inmates. So I was impressed by the size of it. And then number, probably the first thing that I noticed was the cleanliness. When you walk in there, there are no, there's no odors. The floor's clean, the walls are clean. I thought it was doing a very good job as far as keeping it clean and, and something that you, that the people that run it should be proud of for the, for the work there as far as cleanliness. I was impressed by the level of responsibility accepted by all the employees. You get in there and, and you see, we saw workers from the, maybe I don't know, probably lower pay levels on that top. Well, like Justin and Kayla, Kayla are, but all the way through required a lot of responsibility. One little wrong move in that situation could cause a lot of problems. So people had to be alert, continually alert, aware of the prescribed protocols and do their jobs well because one mistake could cause a lot of problems. So the level of responsibility accepted by all the employees, I was impressed with that. I noticed that there was a certain bit of education, continued education taking place, especially as we, we looked at the cafeteria part where there were cooks cooking in there that were inmates that were also getting education as far as cooking and those type of skills. So that might help them obtain employment later and with later. So that education opportunities would, I think we're doing as much as possible, or I don't know, as much as possible. We're doing a lot to serve those inmates while they are there. And I think that helps, you know, to keep them busy, give them something to do to pass the time. The health requirements, I noticed that the masks were being worn. I'm not a mask person. I don't believe in masks, although my position on that, I don't believe they do any much good. But when I saw the mask that they handed out at detention center is different. A much higher quality mask. And so for that reason, I think, yeah, I could, I, in that particular situation, when you have so many people, when you have an outbreak in that situation, I think that is a wise decision to wear the mask. And I think that the regular mask, like where, where would be useless, but those particular masks I was impressed with. And so I think that that, that is a good idea under that situation. I guess basically that's all, you know. I would, I would encourage law enforcement, Sheriff's Office to do all they can to fortify that decision of wearing the mask. I noticed that even when the sheriff people bring people into the holding area, drive a vehicle in there and bring a new prisoner. Even in that situation, if we're going to have, wear the mask in the whole detention center, that means all of it in the garage, too. So I think that it's something that we need to kind of watch out for and inform our deputies that are transporting prisoners off.
I thought it was awesome in there. It was very clean, very neat. I liked the way that the, I noticed there wasn't any like disgruntled prisoners versus the officers or whatever. Everybody seemed to have a mutual respect. I liked that very much. As far as the masks, I agree with you. I did call Sheriff Parker after that and I discussed that with him. And he tended to it immediately. He was very receptive, very gracious about it. And so we did discuss that and I guess that's about all I have on it.
One thing that I was, I told if being incarcerated were fun, you then, I guess, would be probably jailer, but it wouldn't be. But it's not. It's not fun. And there's a lot of people in there who do not want to be there. And it's the whole, you know, it was a clean place. It was well-run. The people were running it, were responsible, well-trained. I thought they did their jobs very well. You know, I thought it was a good facility. With all that in mind, I wouldn't want to work there. It's a job that, you know, being inside, having to, you know, it didn't appear to me that, that the prisoners were causing any problem. But just having to be there with them, a certain amount of that feeling of futility or frustration is bound to wear off on employees. And I'm glad that we're able to hire some people to, to do that job. But I can see it's not the most desirable job it would be for me. And that's why when we start considering these incentives, I think that comes into play for me, how we can entice people to accept them type of positions. So like I said, it was well-run, clean. People doing their jobs well, a lot of accepted responsibility. And all that said, I would want the job myself. Employment there might be a problem.
Can you tell me who attended, which Commissioners, and who provided your tour, that kind of thing?
Misses myself Dina and Mr. Lopez.
And Ms. Hamilton was also there. Okay. Anybody else have anything on that, on the detention center? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item 8A, consideration of, consideration of Resolution 2021-49. Revision of the Hiring and Retention Incentive Program for Roosevelt County, Commissioner Savage.
Madam President, after reading the resolution, I have my numbers. What was the number on the original? Was that 49? 38?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Really, that, that is for Resolution 48. And man, it didn't, in my mind, meet the requirements of our discussion that Commissioners added to me. In my mind, what I was voting on personally was, yes, we want to do this, but it needs to be bilateral down through detention and law enforcement. What we do for one, we do for the other. It's a bilateral decision. And when I read the resolution, it seemed that that wasn't necessarily followed completely all the way down through. So I visited with Mrs. Hamilton about it and told her my views on it. That's why the resolution that you have now is a little different than what we signed. And what happened was when we signed that, we discussed it. Voted on to incorporate the law enforcement. And then while the meeting was going on, the resolution was retyped and brought back to us right at the end of the meeting when we were signing papers. And I didn't really get a chance to really analyze that to the full degree. And when I did, I thought, I'm not sure this is what we were. And so I wanted to have this one that we're considering now included in the call of the meeting so the Commissioners would have a chance to, you know, inspect it and see if this is really what they want to do. For me, I would much prefer the revised version. That's all I have to say.
I agree. I agree with you completely. I thought that's what we were doing is exactly what this one is.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2021-49. I'll second that one.
Got a motion in a second? Commissioner Graydon?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Consideration of Resolution 2021-50. Consideration of resolution 2021-50, declaring a fire danger in Roosevelt County. If y'all don't mind, I would like to, I have had several different sides on this one. I have some that want it and I've fire departments that want it and some that don't. So.
I had nothing but calls.
Go ahead.
I had nothing but calls against this fire ban. Let's just call it a banned ban. It's what everybody calls it. There's many people out there that are still trying to clean up the leftovers from the wind. And they're afraid that when the next wind comes, their houses are going to be buried again. They're wondering how they're going to be able to clean up after the next storm. And as I see it, and I could be wrong with something Randy might do. If somebody caught something for fire, as a county, we're still not going to be liable. This is going to be their first. Sorry. As I see it, and this might be something Randy could view to that. We have no control over anybody lighting a fire that would make the county liable for not having a burn ban. Is that right, Randy?
Well, you know, the county is like, and I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
The county is, you know, always going to be a target for anything that goes on. I know the, the county has previously gotten the county and the city got a tort claims notice for a house burning here a couple of years ago, but ultimately it was decided by, by, you know, the insurers, insurers that there was, there was no liability. So I think, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to pin us with liability simply because you make an informed decision not to enact a burn ban. I don't think there's anything that, that requires you that's discretionary on the part of the commission. So if you act within your discretion and you listen to your constituents, I think you have the right to do that. Whether, whether there's some liability that attaches, that seems pretty nebulous to me. And I don't think it's something you should base your decision upon. So I hope that made sense. I don't, I don't, you have great exposure there. I'm not going to say you, that the county won't get a tort claims notice or might not even get sued if there is a fire. But then how, how, how can you possibly be held, how can the county be held responsible for that when you've made an informed decision? So that's, that's how I'd analyze it.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
I mentioned before yesterday, I drove a lot of roads and say, check out the status of the roads, the accessibility and condition of the roads in anticipation to the road workshop. And in doing so, I saw quite a few, it was still, there wasn't any wind, there's a beautiful day, no wind. I saw quite a bit of burning going on. And I thought, I don't know about this burn ordinance now. I was, like I said, there's a lot, there are a lot of conditions and reasons why you might want to burn now to, you know, like, you know, burn a fire guard somewhere. So if there is a fire, maybe it won't get to you. I saw windbreak trees that were covered once more. So when you, when you get out on roads like we were called out on to see during the bad windstorm, you see those tumbleweeds going by and the roads covered up, that's possible, all the dust. And we was going to say, man, if we have a fire today, it's, it's over. It's going to burn eastern Mexico and Bailey County. It's going to be bad. So it's easy to say, yeah, we need to burn. We need to burn all this. But on the other hand, after seeing what was going on yesterday, people out clearing weeds, burning weeds, getting weeds out of their corrals or their livestock get in there. There's a lot of reasons why now we probably ought to allow it. So as, you know, I thought it sounded like a good idea. Last time we said we asked to be put on the agenda right now, I'm leaning the other way. Maybe we should put that off for a while. We get the tumbleweeds kind of abated, we might reconsider this. But right now, I would say, no, I'm not prepared to vote for it.
I think it's a great thing to talk about so just so everybody be paying attention, knowledgeable that it's dry, there's lots of fuel out there. If you are going to burn, please be careful. Don't burn anything that you're afraid of. You can't control. I think it's a good thing we're discussing it just so people will give it a thought before they just go out there and think they're going to clean up something and burn it. I mean, you need to put in some effort like Mr. Savage said, contain it, keep it where it won't get away.
Well, mainly, mainly you've got to pick your days and time that you're burning because that's.
And I hope everybody out there.
We have a lot of wind, you don't need to start it.
And look at the days coming up. Don't leave hot embers for the wind to blow tomorrow. If it don't look like two or three good days, I just hope everybody uses good common sense and judgment. So I'm not for voting on this fire restriction today either.
I'm not either. We can just skip by it. Moving along, item C, consideration of resolution 2021-51, establishing a cost of living increase for county employees. Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Andrus.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So presented in your packet was a COLA that we are recommending for all county employees. We think it's very important to address it as a COLA level. As we know, we're having our salary study comparison put together and we want to ensure that we remain competitive. Our employees are definitely our greatest asset and being able to do this COLA, we did one last year in December, as y'all recall. And this year, everyone was budgeted annual 50 cents that y'all had approved as a commission. So this COLA would be in addition to any kind of annual incentive that they receive on their anniversary. And that's all merit-based. This COLA is related to all of those as stated in here. It applies to those once they've had one full year of continuous employment with Roosevelt County. The only difference from the one that we presented last December and this December is that the starting percentage for annual salaries under 30,000 is 5%. And then it works its way down to 3%. And before, we had started at 4% and worked our way down to 2%. This is within the budget capacity. We have run the numbers. Mr. Andrus spent, spent one of his very first weekends enjoying building and revising the spreadsheet. For fiscal year '22, it's going to have a projected impact of approximately $92,000 and payable in fiscal year '23 for those employees that'll celebrate anniversaries and that fiscal year be an additional almost 23,000. But again, total, it is something we do feel comfortable with. This is also important to permanently adjust employees' wages rather than just the incentives that could be seasonal and not adjust the bottom line. We really want to ensure that we raise everyone up as we do this and it works all the way through the hierarchy. So this was included in your packet. It very much follows the other. If I forgot to cover anything other than budget. Oh, I did want to discuss one of the things, you know, when we considered and we proposed the 5%. One of the latest releases regarding the Consumer Price Index, I think we're all very much aware and sensitive to the incredible inflation that we're all seeing on the shelves with the grocery bill and the fuel bill and everything else. And so we were really trying to be sensitive to that. Right now, all the indexes point to a 6.8% increase for the 12 months ending in November. And they're projecting an additional growth, obviously, in December. We do not see an end to inflation anytime soon. That also was the largest 12-month increase since June of 1982. So we are trying to be sensitive to all of those and that's why we're proposing this and asking y'all to consider that.
No comments. She covered it all well.
Does anybody have any discussion on this?
But I will make motion to accept the resolution 21-51, establishing a cost of living increase.
Say.
Got a motion in a second. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of resolution 2021-52, authorizing Roosevelt County to pick up 16.86% of the para municipal policy plan five member contributions. That was a lot to say.
I would like to go back to this one, say on the previous thing we just voted on. And I'd like for everybody to read this resolution because we are not giving ourselves rates. Elected officials do not get this cost of living rate. This is just for employees that do the day-to-day work. If you haven't read the resolution, I would just like for the public to know that because listening. Sorry.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, these are two resolutions. I know that there was some questions about the language. This is language that is actually provided by the state themselves as far as the para resolutions go. The irrevocable language means that once we do this, we don't go backwards. It's just like everything else in pay. The only time you ever take an employee backwards is when you adjust their job description, their duties, or their demotion, or anything along those lines. There's an applicable personnel ordinance that we operate with in terms of progressive discipline that way. But this is a positive thing. So what we're trying to do again is ensure that our employees are able to take home more. The first one that we're asking you to consider revolves around law enforcement. That is specific to the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office and Lieutenant Sanchez, or Sheriff Parker can probably recall, several years ago, they voted internally, I just can't remember how long it's been, but they voted internally to raise up and go to the MPO, Municipal Police Plan Five, which was a step up. It took more out of everybody's paycheck, but that was an important part of them to have a larger retirement contribution at that point. And do y'all remember when that was?
Three years ago.
Three. Okay. So at that time, the county didn't pick up any of the employee contribution because again, when you look at the percentages that we're paying. Just a second.
Four years ago, I'm sorry.
Four.
That's on.
It's 19%. Yes. So you look in the resolution and it's, it's very significant. So what we're trying to do is drop that to where the county can pick up some additional percentages of the employees' contribution. So we will continue to pay all of the county, but then we also want to try to pay part of our employee contributions. There is nothing that prevents the commission from coming back in another year or two and considering doing this again. We will continue to monitor the budget. This is something we're very sensitive on because we know that we're seeing it more specifically with the next plan. Not as much specific to law enforcement, but this is something that a lot of people are very sensitive to. So in this, we would pick up 16.86% of the employees' contribution. So that would again ensure everyone is taking home more and their para contributions are still being met. The budget impact on the two that we are proposing, the approximate difference at this point is 55,000 based on the current budget numbers. So what we had budgeted for personnel for para originally, sorry, my fingers are sticking together, was 560,896. And that's across the board for everyone, law enforcement as well as everyone else that's in the municipal general plan two. This in turn, based on the latest calculations that both myself and Sean did, put it just at almost 616,000. So again, that's a $55,000 increase that we're asking for at this point. We also want to closely monitor because the para contribution rates will continue to be adjusted based on legislative action. So this could be something that we foresee bringing back in the future. Much like healthcare, we are trying to absorb as much of the increases as possible to protect our employees. So we are at 81% of healthcare because again, we didn't want that additional percentage to hit our employees and everything. So we'll continue to consider this. We're just asking for your consideration of this. And I'm happy to talk about the other one too, if you want, or we can wait and take action on this one. They're just a little bit different because of the plans and the structures. But again, the first one that we're asking specifically applies to the certified law enforcement officials. There is absolutely nothing and there are more and more municipalities and local governments that are trying to consider actions such as this because again, we all know exactly, you know, how important it is to ensure our employees can take home as much as possible.
Yeah, I know sometimes it will affect the bracket.
It doesn't impact your wages, your gross wages at all. That was not our understanding.
Madam Chair, I move we approve resolution 2021-52.
Say. Yes.
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 Thank you. Yes. So Madam Chair, Commissioners, this very much follows the same. So it's the same percentage across. We asked the county to increase 3% across the board. So the percentages of the employee change because again, there is a significant difference in the percentage of the paycheck that's being contributed. So in the past, we had been contributing right around 20, a little over 20% on the rest of the employees that participate in the municipal general plan two. Now it would be at about 48.36. It drops the percentage that they've been paying from eight and a half to five and a half percent of their pay. I will assure you, one of the biggest things, and you all know we're at about a 40% vacancy rate at the detention center. One of the, the largest concerns that we hear is, what is this para coming out of my check? I don't want it. I didn't sign up for it. I don't understand it. And we go back through with HR, yes, this is the mandatory, you know, retirement that the state has with the pension program. It's not elective in any shape. And then they look back to their pre, their employment documents and understand, but they're so frustrated because these kids come in and they're 18, 19, 20. They are not intending on ever retiring from local government or government in general. A lot of times, they're just here to work a job while they attend school or they're making a transition after they come out of high school. So we see it in a lot of our entry-level positions as they come in again. It's very hard to find the blue collar workers nowadays. We do have some very committed ones that came in initially in the road department and they've been here now 25 years and it's great to be able to retire. But that doesn't seem to be the trend. The labor force now obviously has the shift on the employee taking care of themselves. So the loyalty within those places is not always there. So they don't always retire. They don't always sit in and do those kind of things. So we do believe that it will really help us in the recruitment and retention of especially these entry-level positions like what we're seeing in our detention center and hopefully helping an additional mechanism. Because again, we're, we're taking a wide breadth of an approach, trying to come at it from all different areas to really make these positions as marketable as possible. So we would just ask for your consideration and approval on this one as well to match what, what we're doing with law enforcement.
That's the first question.
Go ahead.
That's the first question I have is, just looking at, you know, you see such a large percentage difference. Is that due to the police plan five to the general plan two?
Correct.
Because right off the bat, it looks like, just reading percentages that the sheriff's department or the deputies aren't getting as much as it. as much as around the rest of the county.
So right now, the way it is, we're paying eleven point nine-five percent of those in the municipal plan two, which is non-certified law enforcement. The employee themselves are paying eight point five percent. When we look at the police plan specifically, the county's paying nineteen point one-five percent, and the employees are paying seventeen point eight.
So it's already paying more on the
Correct. We're paying a larger percentage on our law enforcement, a much larger percentage than any others. Because that is part of the plan that they chose to participate in, and the county chose to support.
So what will be the difference in percentage after if both of these resolutions pass? I mean.
So again, for non-certified, everyone civilian. I don't know how else to use that. Trying to think of a word. But five point five percent. So they'll go from eight point five percent to five point five percent in terms of their contribution. And then law enforcement will go from seventeen point eight to fourteen point eight. So they will see an additional pickup.
So the they'll drop is the same, well, not even as much percentage wise?
Well, it's three percent across. So we asked for the county to pick up three percent of both plans. So it's equal. We're doing everything equal. It's just
That clicked. Yeah, that clicked in.
Sure.
Chairman, I'm leaving for the adoption of Resolution 2021-53.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item F, Consideration of Resolution 2021-54, second quarter budget adjustment or for financial reports. Mr. Vera.
Good morning, Commissioners. So included in your packet are the budget adjustments for second quarter. And there's quite a bit. I know typically there's not that many, but this includes budget adjustments for first quarter and second quarter. Just to touch on a couple, there are some insurance reimbursements. Our fire department, Millen Sand, has already extended their EMS funds. So a lot of those adjustments are also to have their budget adjusted because of that. And also for our stormwater debt service budget adjustment. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-55.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four. Got a motion in a second? Yes.
Yes.
Race of Resolution 2021-55, modifying Roosevelt County annual training policy. Sandra.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we're looking to just modify the training policy as it is, just kind of twerk the wording on it more than anything. We want to continue to push this training, monitor it a lot more closely than we have in the past. We want to change the dates on some of the stuff when it's due and everything. But more than anything, we want to encourage our employees more to get this done on a continuing basis instead of waiting till the last minute. So that's where our monitoring is going to come in. But the training itself is not going to vary as very little from one year to the next, but we want to make sure that we get this done on an annual basis.
Okay.
If I can find that.
And I'm chair and commissioners, if I may, this is the resolution that y'all adopted in twenty twenty. It's just been modified on those. And the other thing that Sean recommended was adding in there the language on under item six on recording, reporting and monitor monitoring mandatory training. New employees hired after September thirtieth of the calendar year will be required to create a complete an abbreviated list, which will again relieve some of the burden that's placed on some of these new hires that are in October and November where we do the modified, hit the most important things, and then roll into the full schedule of the training that y'all had adopted in January so that we can have a full calendar year to work it with our employees.
Okay.
I'm for this.
Resolution, there was one statement there a little bit confusing. One of the whereas, I can't find it on my screen here.
I'm happy to read it out loud. Do you want to read it out loud? Whereas our employees are our most valuable asset and training is our most effective method of training them.
That's it. Training is our most effective method of training. That makes sense, y'all?
Randy, do you have a suggestion on language adjustments there?
So yes, I would Can you hear it? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'd suggest you reword that to say our our most valuable method of providing training is through a standard policy. Are these standard policies? How does that sound?
Will you say that one more time?
Yes. Our most effective method of our most, yeah, our most effective method of training our employees is through these these policies or this policy or through standard policies. I'm sorry. You know, I could reword that, Amber. I didn't pick up on that, but I think it's a good point that the commissioner makes. And I could sure massage that a little more when I when I have it in front of me. I was looking for it on my screen as well and couldn't find it.
And this is something then that at this point, it's not time sensitive like some of the other things that we have. So I would just ask that we either not do anything with it, or if you want to formally table it, then we can bring it back at the January eleventh meeting with that adjustment.
Okay. Leo had a good idea on that as well. The most valuable asset. Education is our most effective.
And if y'all feel comfortable with that one revision, I'm going to need to fix that real quick before y'all sign. So.
We just table it and revise and
We can just do that.
I'll make sure to table Resolution till January
Eleventh.
Revised, move on again.
Yeah. I just wanted to see me again, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yes.
H, item eight H, Consideration of Resolution 2021-56, extending the Roosevelt County premium stipend for hourly detention security personnel who have worked their assigned shift during the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic.
Good morning, round of chairs, Commissioners. So continuing the Roosevelt County premium pay stipend for hourly detention personnel who have worked their assigned shifts during ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. The personnel at Roosevelt County Detention Center are essential are an essential part of the critical infrastructure of Roosevelt County and are physically required to show up to work and could face elevated risk of COVID nineteen exposure. And all Roosevelt County Detention Center personnel while at the detention center have been required and are wearing masks constantly. Over fifteen hundred or one thousand five hundred and sixty employee COVID tests have been administered at the detention person for the detention personnel, and many more tests are anticipated to be taken. Due to the ongoing increase in physical, mental and mental health demands placed upon detention personnel, a premium pay stipend for all hourly hourly Roosevelt County detention personnel as set forth herein is needed. So I ask you humbly to extend this resolution for the COVID stipend as we continue to face the pandemic head on. Our staff at the detention center faces crisis daily and could at any time face more in the days to come. Our staff is required to mask daily and submit to regular weekly testing. Often we require full PPE, and this means gloves, masks, and full gowns as well. This is something that has been supported by the commission in the past and has helped us retain the personnel that we have now. Retaining staff is one of our biggest goals. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to say something on this. I had thought about this, and I heard what the sheriff and all of his deputies have said on this subject. And I agree with you guys. I agree with the sheriff's department. I agree with all of the employees. I mean, we've all had struggles working through this, and I am so grateful for each employee through this. I know that a lot of you put your life on the line daily, and then you're having to have like just direct contact with these people, and it's very, very difficult. After consideration and and reading and rereading and listening to this, I understand that you guys brought this to the commission yourself. I greatly appreciate that. I thank you for looking out for your employees. I like this idea. I would like to talk to Sheriff Parker and the and his deputies on this that I would like to see you, because this one is actually worded for the detention center because the detention center brought it. I would like to see you get one written up for yours. And I would like to see you bring one before the commission to find a stipend for yours that has what your people do, because they have listed in here everything itemized that their people go through, what they do, and in detail. And I would like to see you do the same thing and bring one for the sheriff's department that we could pass strictly for the sheriff's department. And any other department that feels that you guys have been under pressure or have had to work through this, and it's been difficult for you, bring it to us. I would like to see each individual department do it theirself and word it according to what your staff go through, rather than trying to lump it in because each department's different. So I would like to see you guys bring one before at our next meeting. If you would like, we can get it right on the agenda, and you can bring it before the next one, because I would like to see something for your sheriff's deputies as well.
Madam Chairman, I'm glad to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, I have some questions about where this money will come from. Will this be from some COVID relief pay that?
Well, where will this money come from? Will it come out of general fund, or we're going to have some COVID relief money that we can give to the employees? Because I know there is COVID money out there for this.
Correct. And we have the, so the way that the wording is on this, it supports this resolution with what they've been doing over a detention center and as discussed and previously decided by the commission. This is something that is applicable for ARPA funds. What you did today in terms of COLA and PARA is across the board for everyone. So I would caution you in some of the, you know, across the board, like we really want to see how well this works everywhere. Obviously, we have had the express part, and if the sheriff's office can bring theirs and highlight this, they would too qualify potentially for ARPA funding. It's all about the wording, what you're doing with your stipend and how all of that works. And then we also have to take in the and ensure, you know, what kind of impact it will have on payroll. But all of this money, at this point, we've been tracking and will be attributed to the ARPA fund as what y'all had initially approved, which is the American Recovery Act money that we saw come through the feds. We've received about one point seven, and y'all have allocated about half a million of it at this point.
This stipend is it, I have an hard time seeing that resolution again, but I can't remember. Is there stipulations to how long the employment was to receive the one?
So this, the stipulation on this one is, and again, it only runs, so y'all had ran it through December thirty-first of this year. And we're asking for y'all to approve it from January through June thirtieth for the remainder of this fiscal year. But it is specific to employees that they have to work a minimum of eighty-six hours in the facility during the pay period.
I read that, but I'm just talking about time of employment.
No, it is applicable to any employee, hourly employee that is at the detention center currently.
So it doesn't apply to letting you hire?
Yes, it does. Any employee. So any employee, hourly employee at the, so all detention officers, detention sergeants, detention lieutenants. It does not apply to leadership. Hourly.
And that's each paid period, which is?
Every two weeks. A statute. This is the same resolution that y'all had done. We just updated the number of tests as well as the date. But I don't have a copy of the other one with me, so my apologies.
And this run through June. So how many months is that? How much money is that total?
It's six months.
How much money is that toll?
We do not have an accurate calculation because like right now, we have forty percent vacancy. So that will change at any given point depending on our staffing.
Best case, worst case scenario?
Um, so best or
Like
highest amount, you're looking at twenty-eight, twenty-nine employees times one hundred and fifty thirteen pay period.
Give me a second. Should have had that all figured out before I got there. You know, I mentioned earlier that wouldn't we, this is the detention center. And I was impressed by the level of expertise and the dedication, the amount of training, and all the safety protocols. Great. A great facility. Same time I mentioned, in fact, to me, I wouldn't want the job because you're, to me, I kind of thought it was it was a little depressing to be inside there all the time. And nobody likes to be incarcerated. And I think there is a need to probably provide incentive to detention. As I looked at those people inside there, I mean, they looked like they were kind of cut out of mold. I hate to say that, but let's see, some things that were pretty standard among them. I think it would be a hard lot to deal with. Now, those people didn't just poof automatically wind up. They had to be captured and put in there. I wouldn't want to work in a detention center, but I wouldn't want to be the man that's having to corral them, chase them down, tackle them, cuff them, drag them in. That's a tough job. So when I started considering, you know, trying to do some research on why are we having people quit their jobs? Forbes Magazine did a study that said over half the people in the nation who quit their jobs do so because of a lack, a feeling of lack of appreciation. So this incentive, I think would be good, help those people in detention detention center have a more of a feeling of appreciation. I think that's good in that one. Some other studies I looked at said the main reason, number one reason people quit their job was a lack of compensation for the work. Increase in pay would help do that. But when it comes down to But when it comes down to uh, addressing the issue of people quitting their job due to a feeling of a lack of appreciation, if you play favorites and you give incentive to one set of employees and you fail to give it to other sets, yes, you might increase their satisfaction with their job in one set, but the way people's minds work is, hey, where's mine? I'm working too. Don't I get any compensation? So that raised some grave concerns to me. I want to reward those people because it to me is a very serious job, a job that we've proven to have difficulty acquiring people to work there. Something needs to be done about that. I appreciate the effort from the manager's part, Taylor, you and Justin's part. But for me, uh, without, you know, we, we, we studied this formal, former uh, Resolution 2148, and we talked about bilateral inclusion with detention and law enforcement. Thought we had it all ironed out and clear. Came right down to it. No, maybe we didn't. So we had to revisit it, straighten that out. Now it is bilateral. That way, I think every employee in detention and law enforcement are treated the same. We want to make them all feel important. All of them feel appreciated. All of them. Increase their compensation. Because number one, and during the COVID, number one reason that I could find what in COVID was a lack of compensation. Problem before that, number one reason is a lack of feeling of appreciation. But I, for me, to pull the trigger on this and vote for it, I'd have to say, well, it's like that other resolution. If we want to give it to one, we've got to give it to. And the idea that uh, Commissioner Dixon had offering that opportunity for the law enforcement to present a resolution to, I think that that's good. But until that happens, I'm not prepared to vote for it. For the reason that I'm not sure it's equal opportunity for everybody.
I have an, I have another question. Ms. Hamilton, in this uh, resolution, it says they have to work a minimum of 86 hours pay period. So that's six hours overtime?
They're classified as law enforcement, so it's required minimum. So 86 hours is four. They are not, um, it is much different, positioned, much different job than a regular employee.
So 86 hours is just a standard pay?
Like 80 hours in the clerk's office.
So if someone calls in sick, takes vacation days, or are you going to let them use those hours and still pick up their stipends? If they don't show up to work? What if, what if they don't show up at 80 hours?
So as stated in the resolution, it says that if you're, if during any pay period, a county employee is out on sick leave, personal leave, annual or administrative leave, those employees will receive the premium pay stipend prorated for actual hours worked in the facility during that pay period.
Prorated?
Correct. It is not the whole.
I see it as an opportunity for for your employee to, I don't know, if, if you go out and talk to a lot of people hiring people like the county has to, private businesses, big corporate, they're having a hard time keeping people to show up because there's so many incentives out there. They don't work. They can make up their money. And I can see this right now wanting to make the person come to work better. But I have a problem, just like the other commissioners, with one group of people getting it won. I would almost like to just revisit the budget on the salary instead of calling it a stipend. I, I really would. I mean, that, that word really bugs me. So, I don't know. I'm, I, I still have a lot of, I think it's a good deal, but I, I have certain things that I'm just not sure about. Now, if we're going to give the other departments a chance to bring forth their ideas, their stipends, what, what's going to be expected of their employees to get some? Yes, I, I see that. I mean, right now, all I see is you have to show up for work. I mean, do, if your leaders out there like had a points program, like if you did above and beyond, your stipend would be part of that to me. I can see that. But just getting it to show up, I have a problem with that. That's just my opinion.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Just want to share some numbers with you and talk to you about the impact of this, okay? First is, I want to tell you that we're going to have some meetings amongst the detention affiliate and the county manager talking about staffing across all of New Mexico and the shortages in detention, okay? So right now, a lot of facilities are operating around 40% vacancy, which is a tough situation as you guys were able to deserve when you went through a tour. So what we're asking with this stipend is to help us maintain what we have right now. Now, what I mean by that, I'm going to tell you that 20 miles up the road, they're already trying to hire our staff out of our facility. So this increase is essentially breaks down to almost $2 an hour for a paycheck. So our staff is going to be making, doing the job that you don't want to do and you don't envy them doing for right around $15 an hour. Okay? And they're going to go over here and get paid more money. They're going to get paid similar in the benefits that we're getting right now. Some of the changes that Amber is recommending to you guys are so that we can have the conversations with our staff and say, look, we pay a higher percentage of this. We pay more into your retirement. We're investing in it. And there's only so much we can say when we say our facility operates at this level that the events that happen in our facility are low risk. We don't have major events and things of this nature. So when we talk about this stipend, it's more than just saying, hey, thank you for coming to work. It's a way for us to say right now, through the ARPA funds, we understand that there's another level you're having to operate at because of COVID, because of all these things, that we want to recognize you that. Now, the ARPA funds come out and they say that they can be supplemented because of law enforcement. So unfortunately, right now, we can't write and everybody in the county can be subject to this. So one of the reasons we proposed it and worked on it was because ARPA funds could help backfill that portion of, not the whole employee salary, but just that portion of. Part of why it's called a stipend is because that we can separate it and use that for the ARPA funds. And that's all law enforcement. Sheriff's Department qualifies for it too. For the city, I'm sure the police department could call for it as well. So that's why we have it written that way and that's rep. Yes, we would like to see a $2 hour increase, um, but that's not where we're at right now. We understand the county's struggling with funds coming in and everything else. But this is a way we can use monies that have been allowed to be used for this to increase salaries temporarily while we're doing the salary study, while we're looking at what's going on and the changes, how long COVID is going to go on, and the next set of expectations. So kind of, this is a tool we've been talking to our staff about. Now, not just getting people in and getting people hired, but getting people to come to work has been a problem too. Because we have employees that with these restrictions now, if an employee is around somebody that's positive, whether or not they can come to work for 10 days, some of them don't have the time. So we tell these people to be careful in their off time so they can come to work. And when they come to work, then they qualify for this stipend. We also tell people when they have contact with people at the jail, that they need to take care of themselves and they need to take care of their families because we need them to keep coming to work. This is just a small amount of money that we've asked them to continue to keep coming so we can operate at the level we are in the facility. So we don't want to argue. I mean, we really want it for everybody in, everybody in the county. But right now, this is where we're able to do it without a direct impact to our budget. We're able to use these funds to help right now, and that's why we put it together originally. And we're just asking for the extension through June to kind of see where we're at. The salary studies are coming, so if you're interested in making that increase permanent, then we encourage that. We support that 100%. Right now, what we're trying to do is ask for the help with funds that we can use that won't directly affect county budget.
You hit on something there that really put a lot of thought into my head that I, I guess I wasn't understanding. The ARPA funds are only available for stipends to law enforcement to use that fund? I mean, that, if that's true, I mean, if it's only that one, I, I'm all for using that fund because that's what they're for. You, you understand what I'm coming at there, Miss?
Yes, I was just waiting for.
Yes.
So um, what we can do is bring you the language. We were waiting on the final rules. And when this was proposed, then yes, it was only specific to detention when y'all first adopted this in law enforcement. Those are the options. Um, but we will bring you the final rules um, during the budget discussion, everything, and I can run upstairs and get them because I don't have them with me. My understanding is that with the final acceptance of the rule, they are looking at opening up the, the language to include any essential personnel. So however you have that described, so like in our personnel ordinance, our essential personnel are described as safety sensitive, meaning law enforcement detention center staff.
But as it's written right now, only law enforcement detention are able to collect this fund from the.
That has been the clear cut language in the interim.
In the interim. So as soon as they change it, our other parts of the county, the clerk, the treasurer, the road department, they, we can look, we can look, trying to do it for them too.
Correct. Employees across the board could be considered essential at that point across the board uniformly.
Are there not any funds available like these that are for other departments? That are not just for law enforcement, for the COVID funds that would help with this in other departments?
Um, what we've received is just the American Recovery Act funds at this point. So that's all that has been designated by the federal government. Um, and I'm happy to share that reading with y'all. Um, and those final rules and everything so that we can review. We're still waiting on some of the final adjustments and I've seen um, emails come in just this week on a lot more verbiage, um, because we're looking to try on how we can interpret and expand, and the lawyers are looking at this as well. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, with that, uh, I would like for all the departments to see if there's somewhere they can access some of the art funds, like Justin has with his work being put in and Gina Ramsey's, I'll make a motion to accept the, those are county premium pay stipend hourly, the detention center.
We got a motion in a second, Mr. Breyer?
Order to mark, consider the art funds.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, public hearing regarding redistricting map. So we need a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll make a motion when we go into public hearing.
Last second. Okay, we got a motion a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Carries. All right, consideration of Res.
Now we are in public hearings. So my question to you is, would you like for Mr. Morrison to um, present the same presentation he made last uh, meeting to you uh, to the public, or would you just like to go ahead with public comments?
Is there anybody here that needs to see all of what we saw last week?
See that? How about y'all? Does anybody need to see it again? Okay, me too. Okay.
Nope.
I believe Mr. Morrison, um, if you have comments or would like to say anything or take questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I'm just here today at your pleasure. Whatever you need me to do, um, I can stand for questions. I can bring up any maps you want to see on the screen. Um, it just depends on what you want, um, if you know what you'd like to see.
Anybody out there have any?
Do you need to add in those thirty in favor of or in favor for or against?
Yes, does anybody have anything on either plan before or, or for or against any of the maps? I have an against. I don't like C.
Oh, no.
Yeah, C is like out. I hope. I don't like map C.
I don't either.
My favorite was B. I know A changed less things for people. But, and I realized that it did. I liked B because I liked the fact that it gave every district some county roads. And I don't think that it really changes, you know, like you said, the area where they live. I mean, it's all still right back there. It's still all the same. I just liked every district, every district having county roads.
Chair.
Yes.
I appreciate what you say and your reasoning. But those people that's out there in District Five that would be pulled in District One, they, I've served them for years. And I really don't want to give them up. And uh, besides that, they expect good road care and I want to continue giving to. So I prefer A.
Madam Chair? I make a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll second.
Yes. Yes.
So you like iteming, or you like map A?
I move with uh, A. I'll second that. Yes.
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 Okay. Procure, procurement's contract agreement, a request for a agreement with NMDA grant program agreement.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, county officials and others. Um, this is just a little money back in to Roosevelt County that was here. Um, this new grant agreement that you will hopefully be signing, that you're considering um, is adding back $18,722 that we didn't spend in FY '21. So about 9,000 of that we couldn't spend because of restrictions of travel and certain things. And also the distribution was about 9,000 more than we anticipated. So that's where that money came from. And it just puts it over into the grant this year. We were awarded 55,000 this year in the spring. And so that would make the total 73,722 that we can use. Um, we mainly use grant funds for things like our advertising plan. Um, we're also uh, going to use a little, little bit of those funds for the sheriff's department and the police department for minor equipment. We, we're not able to give them a lot of money, but a little bit helps. We were going to try to buy a storage unit, storage connects box, something to store the DWI materials that we've moved from the city to the county that's sitting in your Jake Lopez building right now. So we'd like to get it out of there and out of the way. That's what we're going to do with some of the money. Um, also just a little bit of the money, uh, we may use to buy a little curriculum item that uh, we're wanting to use at fifth and sixth grade level. It's only about a thousand dollars, but but it's, it's money back. And so hopefully you will graciously sign this agreement and we'll move forward. We do have to get them unspent by June. Stand for questions if you need more clarification.
Move we approve, nine A.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Nine B, request for approval of change weapon number.
Nine B, request for approval of change order number three, Roosevelt County Program Stormwater Project.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, we are wrapping up our project and the stormwater project is done at the fairgrounds. We are getting our closing documents to submit that to the state. And this change order is one of the items required to get that closed. I'll stand for any questions on that change order.
Second.
Got a motion in a second?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Request for approval of substantial completion documentation for the Roosevelt County Program Stormwater Project.
Okay, again, the same thing. This document is included in your packet. It is also one of the required documents for our stormwater project.
I'll make a motion except nine C.
Got a motion in second, Mr. Lee?
Yes.
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 Nine D, request for ratification utilization of CES contract number eighteen dash zero two zero B dash C one zero three, also purchase a caterpillar.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, this is a request for your approval to utilize the CES contract to purchase that loader through the CES contract.
Quick question, when can we have the loader here?
We actually have it on order and they did receive a shipment in Halls, the corporate representative of Blackfeet. So now it's just about a range delivery. I'm trying to move it again. It will be a small difference in the budget. We've received a hundred ninety-five thousand. I'll wait for the loader to receive the first price of the contract is two twenty-five, but for thirty thousand, we have a new loader. We're thankful. It's just natural.
We could have used it last year.
Last year and the year before is obviously increased, but we're excited to have one. So we very soon, I would say we should receive until the forehand of the year.
With that, I'll make a motion. Nine E.
Got a motion in second?
Yes.
Yes.
We needed that thing last week.
Nine E, request for approval of first amendment to the State General Fund Cooperative Agreement with Mexico Department of Transportation for Sundell Valley Road and North Roosevelt Road A B.
Yeah, so included in your packet was the first amendment. The only adjustment that we are making is we've requested an amendment from the expiration of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one to March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. You are familiar that the roadwork is done on Sundell Valley, however, we have faced multiple obstacles in regards to trying to get the fencing installation on North Roosevelt Road A B. We are still working through those situations and those applications. And so we wanted to have a extension of ninety days to allow enough time to complete what we're able to of that project.
Quick question.
Okay.
Is it not that the county has an easement on every section line of sixty feet?
So this is a different situation. This is something that we're fighting. Mr. Nutson is aware of this with state land, and we are looking at some different applications at this point. But we've been advised by state land that the easement cannot be assumed. That is their opinion and what they've been doing, however, there is some prior legal precedent that the county attorneys have discussed within their affiliates. I know that the affiliate, the attorney's affiliate is discussing this item in January at their meeting. So it is not a new issue, but it is something new that is for us. Our planning department is also helping in this and trying to coordinate some things. And we're working very closely with our private landowners and with the commissioner and the district on it, so I don't have a good, solid answer for you.
If that's not true, we have school sections all over this county that would say that we do not have an easement through them.
The unique part of this is it involves state land and their interpretation of things, so.
Well, school section or state land.
It's state land's insistence on this, that we're meeting the, the problems.
Okay. What is their reason for not granting that?
They have provided an easement application, and they're wanting to charge us per rod, sixty dollars per rod for it, so they were wanting to charge us forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars for an easement on these two miles.
How much?
Forty-eight thousand seven hundred.
Build a fence on two miles, easement. Easement to build a fence.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with, it's, the easement itself is the approximate cost of what it will cost to install five miles of.
Anyway, we have.
Wow.
That's, that was really bugging me.
This, this only extends the contract, Carrie, so that we can have a little bit more time to try to find a resolution and get as much of this completed as possible.
So we want to pay them how much?
Not in this contract.
They're wanting how much?
They, the state land office feels they are entitled to forty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty cents.
That's a pretty expensive bench stroke. How many acres is in that? How many acres in sixty feet by mile? That's four acres. I don't know. It's nothing. They're just an easement.
It's, yeah, they're charging thirty dollars per rod plus one dollar for additional foot width.
Yeah, let's extend this agreement though. And who's the, who's the land commissioner now?
Stephanie Garcia Richards or Richards.
I would hope that by reelection, she needs to take strong consideration.
It's, this amendment, we're just trying to amend with the Department of Transportation, so we have some more time to try to find a solution.
I'm for the amendment. A move we approve, nine E.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we will go into executive session. There's some, I have to read that, don't I? Pursuant to ten dash fifty.